Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Randy.
Yeah.
Trusty Early.
Yes.
Trusty Miller.
Here.
Trusty Murphy.
Here.
Trusty Bellotto.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to just to start the meeting. As everyone probably knows, it's the seventeenth anniversary of nine eleven and the attack, the tragic attack, took down the two buildings and anyway, so I'd like to take a moment, have a moment of silence for all those that died that day and subsequently after, people, the emergency responders and people probably lived in the area that got cancer from inhaling all the toxic fumes and debris that was floating around. So just take a few moments of silence for that and then we'll start our meeting. Thank you. Okay, so thank you all. I think one thing I think about when that is these places that are getting bombed and other areas also, like how shocking that was for us to have and to think of places where people aren't political or whoever and their whole towns are being destroyed in other places in the world and what that must feel like, how lucky we are here and how tragic this seemed to us and imagine having a whole city like Aleppo just taken down to the ground and that's your family and your life and everything and you're not dealing with the politics or whatever that's going on there and so we are incredibly lucky here and my heart's out to those people too and have, you know, everything you own, everything you've lived for, your family, your generations are all just destroyed. So anyway, we'll move on to brighter things here hopefully. Let's see, I had a couple sheets here, so just gotta organize myself. Monthly reports, we have recreation commissions up first and we have our new chairperson, Ruthen Cullenbar, who's so far doing a phenomenal job with a great report, which I'm happy, happy to see. So you're up if you'd like to read this or-
I do have a few issues as I wrote in my report, I need to discuss with, you know, with the, the applications get approved. You might have seen in the minutes reflecting that if it's not, if it's a non-ticketed event and one that's just a usual and customary application, that we're not waiting until the regular meetings if it comes in beforehand and the commission has voted and agreed that the chairperson or designee can approve those so they can go on in a more timely manner and we're not waiting till like two or three days before, as we're working on the new application. Trusty Early gave me some great feedback on the revision to the application of use. Some questions that she asked, that we also asked is on the insurance level. It's something that as you're looking over them, we may wanna revisit the level of insurance that groups or individuals need to have when they're using the things rates now. It's on for individuals, it's three hundred thousand, for groups it's one hundred thousand, one million to two million, you know, but that's something that I don't know if we wanna look at that in this day and age or something that our insurance company should look at again. The other thing was fees that are being charged. The fee scale is the same as it has been, I understand, for quite a while with the exception of the ticket events, one that you approved last year, which is two thousand dollars for the ticket events use of Mayor's Park. So I don't know if you wanna look over again and give feedback at some point is what you think might be appropriate to increase to use Mayor's Park. For locals during the week it's twenty-five, I mean for village residents it's twenty-five during the week and fifty dollars on weekends. For Phillips Town residents, it's fifty dollars during the week or a hundred dollars on weekends. So I don't know if that's something that you wanna take a look at and-
Will you guys be putting what your recommendation is first or?
Would you like that? I mean, we can certainly in our next meeting, you know, is that something that you want to visit? Do you, I mean,
yeah.
Trusty Early did mention that. Is that something you were more in line with what we're now doing for, okay. Another point that she brought up, which was a great one, which is with the use of the dumpster at Mayor's Park. There are dumpsters there, so of course when people go and use the Mayor's Park, now the pavilion area, then most likely they're putting their things in the dumpster. We don't take the use of the dumpster fee off their security deposit, but it might be something we consider that if they, whoever checks the facility after it's used, if the dumpster is full because of the party, should that come off their security. So those are things that Trusty Early brought up, so we'll discuss at our next meeting and if you have anything else. I need to make a correction on the second, the third bullet, which is the Waterside Park tree damage, where it says they went out to bid for the trim the roots and repair the pavers. I also put mulch and seeding. That will have to be a separate, that's separate. The trimming the roots and repair of the pavers is one piece of the project. Mulching the area where the pavers are gonna be removed from because they can't trim the roots. For one of the trees, only two roots can be trimmed. The big tree, the tree, I should say, only two roots can be trimmed, so the other roots are still going to be above ground level and they're gonna be, the pavers removed and mulch put down there. So the mulch and the seeding is separate. I do have, we do have one bid from Cherokee Masonry for the masonry work. And the question comes, you know, we don't have any others as of tonight. Do we wanna move forward? I can, I can hand that in and you can take a look at it. I don't know if that's public information at this point or not, so. The choice would have to be, do we want them to, when is the first vote coming in?
October sixth.
October sixth, you know, do we want to go ahead and try to get the paving work done before October sixth? If not, I would suggest that we again block off that section so that when, when there is that much traffic in that area, it's more likely that somebody could, you know, have an accident, that we, we block up, that we block that area again. So.
When's your next, do you have another meeting?
Our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. How smart. Should we wait for another estimate? It's coming from the insurance company. So. What's that? We have, but we didn't receive. Do you think we'll receive that or not? I mean, we're not gonna go knocking doors down. We, I think, passed them a number of times.
I think it's very busy town of year. We look around, so.
Did Roger say he could do this or not?
I have not gotten back to Roger, so I wanted to wait till here tonight if we wanna see. To me, it's like if he could work it and get it done before the first vote, then I think that we should move forward. If he can't, I think that we should wait and then have him.
Do you think we need to run this by an insurance company or not? You're okay?
We have money. We have ten thousand dollars out to them for the trees, which they have not reimbursed us for yet, but there's no problem with it. Just that we haven't got the check yet. But I think we're still, we're still well within the amount of money we have for this damage.
And then you still have to go to somebody for the seeding and the mulching. So what we, which-
I would, I would move ahead with it. It's-
Okay, I'll contact him tomorrow.
As long as he can do it.
And see what his schedule, if his schedule fits in and go for that. Great. Skate park, they are still moving forward. It's very exciting, the skate park people. It's exciting to see. I did contact and speak to Michelle Hotford. She's one of the teachers in our houses and she did get back to me because they need to, their next step is to do test pits for the soil in the proposed area. So I did, she did get back to me about what a test pit needed to be. You know, is it, the test, there would be five of them. They would be one foot by five feet and then five feet deep. Yeah, because they have to make sure that the soil in there is the right place to put this stuff. The soil material would be replaced. Her feedback to me, turf layer also replaced and then grass seed spread after they make the-
So they would do the digging and fill it up?
They're gonna do everything, but-
No, I mean, will they do it in the same day? We don't want like five foot pits out there.
No, they would have to do, I imagine they're gonna do it right post. It's a good question. It's not one I asked, but I'm assuming it'd be the same day. But I'll see Michelle tomorrow and I'll, I'll confirm. I don't think they have to keep them. I think they just wanna take a sample of the, how compact it is and that, so. The same day. So the question is if it's the same day and it's all gonna be done within the timely manner, we can go ahead and tell them it's okay to-
I think you guys can-
Do test pits? Okay, I'll see Michelle tomorrow. The Todd Park, as you know, the fence has been replaced. I've met with Andrea Hudson, who's one of the Todd Park group members, and discussed having a more written statement about what's the responsibility of the Todd Park Committee and who the members are and how we can contact them, whoever, if anyone needs to contact them and what the responsibility is of the village, you know, for that area in and around the Todd Park. So that's moving forward. Okay.
Ruthen, is that fence going to be stained or painted or whatever?
No. No, the previous one. It's the same exact wood of the previous one. It's cedar. So it'll, it'll age just like the previous fence aged. The only thing that's left to be done on that is the previous donations on the first fence had name plaque, names on it, so those had been taken off and those will go back on. And the new donations will go on and somebody recently just volunteered to do the laser cutting for those new names. So hopefully, I would say, I'm not saying before the snow falls, but hopefully by next spring, the names will be on. I think that, I think the Todd Park Fence Group is taking a little break because that same group went up and took down the tree on St. Mary's Lawn. Let's see. John Morente has agreed to be a liaison with Haldane because the Haldane agreement for the use of the fields has kind of been out there, so hopefully when we meet on Tuesday, he'll have a report if he's at least made some contact. We purchased a refa, I'm sorry, we have a lot of, we purchased or refa, we agreed to purchase and refa, I don't know if that's been on audit, the status of it. We're also looking for the next big expenditure is to replace the doors on the maintenance shed in that area. So Jeff Phillips is supposed to look into that, so you might give him that. The only question that we had for you is the village bathrooms, which are now, somebody else is cleaning them?
Yeah, the ones at the foot of Major.
That's what I meant.
Not your bird here. The ones at Mayor's Park are.
Right. Okay, and so-
Anything that's done down there is billed to the village out of-
And is that still from the recreation funds? Okay, so that, that's just a question the committee had, so thank you for that. And I guess the only other question is, I received a text from a committee member about the status of the taping at Mayor's Park.
We'll discuss that.
So, other than that, that's my report. Hopefully we won't be so busy to make some.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions from here, things?
I don't think so. Thank you. Much love. Planning board does not look like we have anything. Zoning board does not look like we have anything. Town of Phillips Town is not here. Historic district review, we have a mail update from Kathleen Foley. Now that we're through the summer construction season, applications of the board are slowing as we would expect. This month, we are looking at a fence proposal of fifteen parrot and window and gutter replacement on the building that contains Hudson Hills, one twenty-nine, one thirty-one, Main Street. Slowing of applications, the return of the board to its full complement after vacations and illnesses gives us more capacity to work on the design standards. We started editing last week, last week and will continue after regular board business this week. We asked the trustees to take up discussion of the Timmy Arch, arch, sorry, for communications to you from Chairs of Glinsky. If you or the clerk can communicate the outcome of your discussion, we can continue conversation at our meeting tomorrow night, respectfully, somebody to Kathleen Foley.
Do you know what the Tim Arch is of?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, so the old Tim Arch, it's part of the application or in part of the the approval for the Butterfield project. The Timmy Arch, which was located in the in the old hospital, was preserved and they were supposed to, to install it somewhere. I think it started out with Building One and since everything's been shuffled around, now it's supposed to be installed in the, the senior center or whatever it's being called. And, and it looks pretty much like the arch isn't gonna fit and the way it was in the last, its last installation, they put a drop ceiling in and it was cutting part of the top off of it. So it's really horrendous and they feel the same thing's gonna happen this time unless they have to cut it or whatever and then they're afraid that something might be destroyed doing that. So their recommendation from their board was to, was to ask, ask the board, our board, if we would take possession of that, if they were willing to, to give that back to us, kind of, and not be part of the approval and that we at some later date can install it somewhere. They just feel where it's going to be installed and how it's gonna be installed is not, you know, first of all, it's probably not gonna be noticed by that many people and then also it's not gonna look that good.
Is it something that can go outside? I mean, I-
I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think you're going to do that.
I don't think it's marble.
No, I think it's concrete. It's formed concrete, I think. I'm not positive.
It was related to the Butterfield Hospital?
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Timmy.
Yeah.
Mrs., it's actually in memory of Mrs. Timmy, I believe.
So it's large, but it's broke down right now into like four pieces or whatever, so.
It's an arch right between the old building and portion of one of the additions. So it went from floor to ceiling and across and then down, so it was big.
So if anyone have any thoughts on that? I personally think it's not gonna look good. I mean, I, she sent a picture of how it did look and, and with a drop ceiling or if it's cut in or cut down.
But that was, that was a condition.
Yeah.
That was a condition for Butterfield to, it was a condition to demolish the old Butterfield building
Mm-hmm.
so that the new Butterfield buildings could be constructed. And so it seems to me the onus is on the owner to find a place that-
He has found a place.
That would be prominent and would allow it to be installed in an unrestricted manner.
I don't know if the approval is that specific or if it says you should install it. You could say, yes, I'm installing it.
But it was part of the agreement that they-
Yes.
Keep it there. And, you know, I mean, you make an assumption when we, when, you know, through all of this, that it's going to be prominent. It was important enough for them to put it in the original agreement.
Well, that was, that was, that was from the HDRB. That was part of their condition for approval. So now the HDRB is saying that-
Yeah, but when, when it was part from the HDRB, but it was agreed upon by the owner
Yes.
as part of the terms that yes, we will keep it. Yes, it's important to the village or whoever, you know, people way before I was ever a part of the village.
Right.
And they said yes, which meant that they were supposed to make a place for it. I mean, now we're gonna get stuck with it. Not that, you know, stuck with it may be the wrong terminology, but what are we gonna do with it?
Stuck under.
What are we gonna do with it?
I have no idea what we would do with it, to tell you the truth.
If it was something that we could put outside down by the riverfront or something or outside the building.
Where does it reside now, on the site?
Yeah, it's in, it's inside, it's under, it's boxed or whatever in crates or like in three parts of them.
It would seem to me, I, I don't remember what the base of the arch looked like. It seemed to me that most of the ornamentation on the arch was from waist level up. It would seem to me that one could cut it down inside, size, so that it could fit in an area with a drop ceiling. And I think that conversation, and I would think that Mr. Galaro, sorry, you know, for construction or Butterfield project, whatever it's called, should pay for that to be done.
Right.
So that's what I would recommend.
I can pass that on. Lynn, thoughts?
I agree with Marie.
Okay. All right, Fran, we've heard from you here, so.
This is the first I'm hearing about it, so, yes, I think if, if it's his project, he has to do it, but I really have no ideas that are fresh right now.
All right, I'll get back to Kathleen and tell her that, what I've, what I've heard and kind of that we think that it should be installed and should be installed properly and not half of it hanging out.
It shouldn't be crappy. You know what I mean? It shouldn't be stuck up into a drop ceiling or whatever. I don't even know what the thing looks like, so.
No, I don't either.
It's an arch.
I know, but if you cut the legs off it, people have to duck under it now. You know what I mean?
That's a good question. I don't know.
There's nothing that can be done to make it an outside piece of property that you could put it-
Make it what?
To make it-
Outside.
Outside, something that would-
I doubt it.
Because what I'm thinking of is they're gonna put the park in the corner. It's supposedly Pataki Park or somebody's there's an entrance there. Yeah, I don't know what was in the space to-
I doubt it.
I'll pass on and, and see what they come back with. This was discussed by them, so I will follow up.
What do they wanna do?
Who?
The HDRB.
Oh, they'll do whatever they, oh, HDRB said that they wanted not to put it in there because of the way they felt it was gonna be installed.
And so, and so that what they want to do is they want the village to store it and then the village to find a place to put it at some point, which is, yeah, which means it'll end up in the-
A garage, a highway garage forever.
Yeah.
All right, moving along. Fire Company, we've got good, good news on that though.
No report given though.
No report, no report given. I guess they're not grateful for the new roof that was done and-
I don't know. That's an assumption I wouldn't make.
The siren was redone.
I don't know if the siren is in-
It hasn't been installed.
Hasn't been installed.
Oh, it was fixed.
Couple of things, the, there was a little additional work needed on the, on the roof, but I went up and so did Steve and looked at everything. It was done really, I think done really well. There was a few things that they didn't do on the flashing. Steve brought it up to them and I think they repaired some.
Yeah, I got it.
And we have to do, we're gonna have some of the other stuff repaired because the flashing didn't come down quite as far because they added a cap. They straightened stuff out, so one section has to be kind of cut back a little or whatever, so we're gonna have someone to take care of that and kind of clean up the top.
Need some masonry, masonry work.
And there's also another bill received for the electric work in removing the ACs.
Right, yeah. That was a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, it's small.
Not even worth talking about. Tree Advisory Board, we do not have anything. Code update, Marie.
Okay, in the month of August, the code update committee conducted the third public meeting as well as two regular meetings and two meetings to prep for the public hearing. Should be for the public meeting. There was no public hearing. My mistake. At the third public meeting, CUC members presented reviews of five topics for phase three. Evaluate adopting ridge line protection overlay district, outdoor lighting standards, green building standards, evaluate flooding standards and evaluate steep slope standards. The CUC also presented draft village code changes for all topics except evaluate adopting ridge line protection overlay district because the CUC recommended against adopting a ridge line protection overlay district. All materials presented at the public meeting are on the village website, including access to the YouTube video of the meeting. The monthly conference call in August was conducted with NYSERD. The revised NYSERD contract was approved and accepted by the village of Coltspring.
Thank you very much. Officer in charge, Bert. Wake up. I wish I ran me off the road tonight. Was that intentional?
I'm sorry?
Going up Main Street.
Yes. Give me everybody. For the month of August, we had ninety-one calls for service. We had an uptick of a lot of eighty cases this month. It was a little higher than usual. We also had an uptick in false alarms, basically power outages in certain places or just the school, the burglar alarm goes off, there's a crit that runs in through the building or whatever. We had an uptick of those, which keeps my guys kind of busy for false alarms on that. Other than that, it was a quiet month. We had one male arrested for mental health law. We seem to be getting those at least once a month. He had to be taken out of Putnam County Hospital. And we had moving violations, twenty-six. We had parking summonses, ninety, for a total of a hundred and sixteen tickets issued from the month of August. That's it.
What, does it say property damage on there? There's a few instances of that. What was that?
Property damage could be basically just somebody, somebody's ran into a mailbox or that specific one I'm not positive on. Normally, even in a vehicle accident, if somebody backs into, let's say, your post or something like that, it'll go down as a property damage only. If it goes down as a auto accident, that would be considered a personal injury, even though it's an auto accident, it would go down on a different, different-
So it's not vandalism or?
Okay, no, there was no vandalism. I'm sorry, we'll go back on one. There was some graffiti on the back of Food Town that one of my officers noticed on a midnight. I don't have the exact date right now. He did, we did an investigation on it and it is still ongoing and it looks to be something similar that we've had in the past. So we are looking into that, those individuals and that as we speak. And as we get further into it, I will let the board and village know.
In a note of levity, the animals that you mentioned at the school today, they had a hummingbird in the building.
That's right, we heard about that.
Yes, we were up there. We heard about the hummingbird. They can be deadly, setting off all sorts of alarms. Very quick, very quick.
So Larry and I met with the superintendent today and who is the officer? He's the-
Matt Shelters is the SRO, the SRO of the school.
Regarding the traffic pattern and kind of following up and seeing how we can assist, so Larry had some thoughts or we all had thoughts and so we'll be trying to work with them and see what we can do to alleviate that. I think this guy's really great. He's definitely taking things step by step and thinking it out, which I think was lacking in the last administration, so I have a good feeling about it all. So I think things will be good. So it's a good meeting. Also, we have, which Larry didn't bring up, a, we've got someone on camera that got out of their car and their car smashed into the wall down there and they got back in their car and left after we had just fixed it. We got their plate number now and I will follow up on that.
It's an ongoing investigation. I've located the person that did do that and I will make sure that the, hopefully she was, he or she is willing to repair it through their insurance. That was for next month because that just happened.
Sorry. I'm just so excited about it.
So actually surveillance cameras are all working, so.
That's good.
Yeah, that was a shame.
Thank you, Larry. Greg, you're up. What are wastewater departments?
Okay, if we start with wastewater, not a lot, neither of them. But we had a vendor come by and and they're loaning us a piece of equipment for a couple of months that's going into the wet well, which is where the the influent of everything into the plant comes into what's called a wet well, where it's pumped into the system. Grease and things that are deemed to be disposable tend to form a mat on top of everything. It's six, eight inches thick and it's quite hard and it's tough to break up. It's, it's a maintenance issue and it's really, there's a lot of odor involved with it. This unit that, that was supplied to us as a trial basically aerates the system down there and, and not having the still water on top of it, the grease doesn't form, the mat doesn't form, blah, blah, blah. So we're assessing it. We get it for a couple of months free. At the end, we'll, you know, they'll, they'll give us a proposal on what it would cost to get it. We'll decide whether it's worth the effort and, and, you know, come with the recommendation to do or not do anything about it.
Isn't it a summertime only problem?
No, it's, it's, you're, greases you around. Yes, it's forever and always.
Grease is the word.
And grease is the word. And it gets onto the control floats. We have a pressure transducer that, you know, basically senses the, the pressure that and correlates that to the level in the wet well. That's our main control, but the backup controller, these control floats and they have to be able to manipulate and, and, you know, show level and when they're hung up in a grease mat, they don't work.
What do you do now about it?
We're in there every, you know, couple of weeks, you know, basically hosing it and breaking it up and it's, it just, it's time that could be better spent if, again, depending on what these floors are. So far it looks pretty good, but we'll, we'll see. It's nice when it's free.
Yeah.
Um, so that's wastewater. Um, the, oh, Kemalavon, they did get down there, we do have the new backer board and the, uh, the emergency disconnected manual transfer switch for Kemalavon, who's done, uh, that's done and looks good. Uh, so that finishes out that part of the Market Street rehab and replacement.
On Market Street, was somebody complaining about odor or anything, was that anything?
I haven't heard anything about odor with Market Street, really?
Yeah, down at the end, they said something about when cars go by, you didn't get that.
I didn't get that one.
Yeah.
Didn't have it.
Okay. Uh, water department, uh, there was a leak in our private service line, uh, it was repaired, saved about five thousand gallons per day, that was found when, two months ago, we had a leak detection company come through, we're doing it about every two years to make sure that our system is watertight. Um, and it was only one of the, the leaks noted, uh, there's some maintenance that we have to do on a, a regulating valve on Northern Avenue, but the, the one leak that was found has now been repaired, so that's a good thing. Uh, and I did mention, I think last time, that we're looking at changing the master meter that comes out of the storage tanks, our entry point to the distribution system is a, a six-inch meter that's been in there since ninety-seven. We're looking to put a new meter in, a Badger meter, that's tied in with our cellular, so that we can literally take snapshots of a period where water has passed out of the meter, and then what has shown up at meters in residences, so we can do kind of a water audit, um, so I'm getting prices on that and.
You had, you had talked about the possible, the possibility of that as a project, to try to monitor the, uh, the, the, uh, overflow.
Yeah.
And the intake, uh, each of the, each of the Badgers, uh, so that, that would be the, the way to do that.
Yeah, sure.
Once that, once that is installed.
And plus, we would, you know, in having a, you know, a brand-new meter involved, you know, your accuracy's, you know, over twenty years, that meter's put, I think, about one-point-four billion gallons through it, uh, since it went online, so, uh, one-point-two, sorry. Um, so, you know, it's, it's still accurate, but, I mean, nice to have something new to, to be referencing.
Yeah.
You know, the meters in the system are new, and, and that's new, so probably the best shot we have at it. Uh, so that's that, and then, uh, we contacted tectonic engineering, they're claiming to have their survey crew out on the west side of the Upper Reservoir Dam to flag the boundaries of what we're, you know, contemplating as the alternatives for necessary property easements. And then, once, once that gets flagged out, you know, then it's easier to go up there and meet with the property owners, 'cause you're not just showing them a piece of paper, they can actually see, they'll have different colored flagging for, you know, whatever different, you know, options are out there, and they'll be able to see what's going on and have a probably more fruitful discussion that way than pointing at a piece of paper and saying, you know, where that would be in the woods.
What are they planning on that?
Uh, I asked them for a timeline, I'm hoping for it to be this month. So I'm gonna say.
I told you to read if they gave us permission, right?
Yes, and that's when we approached them, wanted to make sure nobody wanted to have any issue with that.
You asked us, um, it was an email about some piece of equipment you wanted to purchase, about twelve thousand dollars, is that?
The iteration for Foundry Brook, uh, reservoir, yes. Uh, oddly enough, uh, last week, a gentleman walked into my office and has an alter, similar, a similar product, uh, similar theory, and a different product, it's there, bringing it in, and they wanna do some testing and provide us with, uh, another quote, another proposal. So basically, putting that on hold while we gather the other information, because we had, you know, already done some research to find out, you know, what alternatives were available, and this one wasn't even available at that time, so it's that new. So we're gonna evaluate and then get back to it, so, yeah, hopefully within the next month, it will have some information on that.
Also, Greg and I and Bart walked the, the west side of properties behind where the old road was and the Russian camp, and, uh, trying to, trying to stake out a way to get to the, uh, access to the dams when, when and if that happens, um, so.
Yeah, that's the east side.
What's that?
That's the east side.
East side, sorry, yes, east side, um, anyway, I, I followed up with Phillips Town today, tried to get more maps, but got a little bit clearer, and I also marked off some stuff, so I'll talk to you about that.
All right.
Uh, report of building department, uh, let's see, new building permits, uh, application is only one, building permits issued five, uh, COOs issued four, title search is completed four. Uh, fees, uh, August, the total is two thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Highway department, Fran, do you wanna take on this novel?
Sure. Month report for August, we started out the month with some tree work, trimming the willows at the riverfront, multiple limbs that had come down during the windstorm, finished removing a large limb from Pauline, removed a dead tree from McConville Park, and assisted Phillips Town Tree Service with the cut-up and removal of a fairly good-sized locust that came down on North Street. During the month, we came across three different hornet's nests that needed to be removed, two of them were removed by the highway department, while the third one was beyond our means and was removed by Mark Fracenza of Bugsy's Pest Control. We had a few flooding issues below the tracks and came to find out that they were caused by the generator not engaging when power was lost. We removed the discarded fence that surrounded Tots Park, brought it down to the highway department for future burning. We finished painting all of the crosswalks on Main Street and painted the three by the school on Mountain Avenue, we assisted Mayor Morandi in installing pavers on Main Street. We removed two broken benches from the nine-eleven memorial and combined them into one structurally stable bench to be put out on Main Street. We had multiple times of cleaning the catch basins, the brooks, and various other drain pipes around the village due to the heavy rains we received in August. Brush pickup continued this month on the third Wednesday of the month, and we will probably be going bimonthly pickups in September. Potholes were filled again, we removed and replaced a twenty-foot section of sidewalk on Parsonage Street, removed and replaced a forty-eight-foot section of curb on Parrot Street. We installed a pad of pavers at McConville Park for the commemorative bench that will be dedicated this coming September. We continued watering the recently planted trees around the village. We worked on the air compressor for the new jackhammer and got them fitted with each other. The oh-three international garbage truck had a tire blowout while en route to the wheel, uh, wheel elevator in Peaks Hill. We picked up eight new tires for it and had Michael Padala install them on said truck. All of this happened while I was away on vacation, and a very young and inexperienced crew worked together to get the truck back safely and purchased new tires for Mike to install them. Pause for proud dad moment. For Bugsy. The same oh-three international garbage truck then had starting issues with heavy white smoke billowing from exhaust stack. Currently, Riverview Industries is working, looking into the problem. Training has slowed down this month as we're trying to catch up with more pressing issues, in September, we're looking to put a more concentrated effort into the pavers on Main Street and to also start repairing the curving up and down Main Street. Submitted to crew chief Bugsy.
I'd like to ask Bugsy to continue or to resume reporting on the amount of garbage delivered to Wheel Elevator and, uh, recycles delivered to recon. Is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
The reason for this is because the, well, one reason, I'm sure, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, uh, the recycles have climbed again, um, so they're closing in on the same cost for recycles as, as they are for, for, for garbage.
Now, we're thirteen dollars apart.
Thirteen dollars.
So your report from a few weeks ago is.
So we have to address that in some manner, I don't know what, but, uh, anyway. Uh, report from the justice, uh, justice court, fines forfeited bills and civil penalties, twenty-nine hundred dollars, parking tickets, three thousand one hundred, ten dollars, civil fees, ninety-five dollars, mandatory state surcharges, thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars, and the total is seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, effectively Thomas Costello will. Okay, next we have the, approve the, uh, completion of probationary periods for labor Zach Markey and Cory Thomas, effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, per recommendations of the highway crew chief. Uh, I met with Bugsy and evaluated, uh, his job and his performance, as well as the, uh, as, as well as asking him about the, uh, the labors that we had hired, Zach and Cory. Um, he had nothing bad to say about them, I mean, there was a few little things, not bad, um, that he was trying to correct, maybe uses of cell phones, things like that, um, on the job, but other than that, uh, he, he recommended, uh, ending their probationary period. Um, this is six months, we could bring it up to a year, uh, by law, um, but he's recommended that, uh, that we hire them now, and, uh, so I'll make the motion to, uh, to, uh, end the probationary period for Zach Markey and Cory Thomas, effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, as we had discussed in the past, we were bringing up, uh, increases in, uh, in the salaries, since we start off so, so low, it's not competitive at all, and we'd like to keep some of these guys, uh, if we can. Not that a dollar might help, but maybe it will, um, anyway, it shows that, that we do, are trying to, uh, to bring things up, um, so, uh, like to make a motion to approve a salary increase, uh, to sixteen an hour, uh, for Zach Markey and Cory Thomas, now that they've, uh, are off their probation, um, and this is effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is the approval of completion probationary period for, uh, highway department crew chief, uh, Robert Bugsy Downey, Jr., uh, effective September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, uh, for recommendation of, uh, myself. Uh, as I said, I sat down with Bugsy, uh, we went over everything, uh, critiqued, uh, things both pro and con on, on, you know, his performance. Uh, I think overall, he's done a great job, I think one thing that really has to be taken into consideration, that he has three new guys that have never, never worked in, in the highway or in this, under these conditions, and, uh, and this is the first time that he's actually taken on the, uh, the responsibilities of the crew chief, so, uh, I think he did a, a really good job in keeping things together, as you know, uh, our highway department's been bouncing around, so, uh, hopefully it's stabilized now, it seems like we have a good crew. So I'd recommend, uh, ending his probationary period.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, did I miss something? What's that? Oh, mayor and the board, yeah, okay, sorry, I skipped us.
You skipped us.
All right, I'll, I'll go back then, I'll do, uh, I'll do the, uh, consider increase to a hundred dollars the fee for submitting, uh, film permit application, it's currently fifty dollars. Um, as you know, uh, from our la, experience, just recently, at our last meeting, we went through all this trouble to, uh, to, to get this permit up and, you know, for these people, um, they had the application in, and then they backed out. So it's taking us, you know, a hundred dollars is, is nothing, but at least it's a little more than, than we're getting right now, so, um, if people wanna submit an application, it's gonna cost them a hundred dollars now, and it's non-refundable. So if they back out, at least we have a little bit to show for it. So I'll make a motion to increase the fee from fifty to a hundred for the film application.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Are we, are we at a point where we can put that information on the website, like the application and the fee list and everything, like, do we need any more approvals or any more votes on this?
I think we.
I think we're good.
Think we're good.
So we should be able to, like, talk to Jeff next week about.
Yeah.
Trying to get the whole filming thing up, okay.
I, just related to this, um, as I was looking at that application last week after the meeting, there was a lot of information that just plain wasn't there, um, that we asked for, you know, um, people need to not just submit the application, but as, with the application, they need to also submit their insurance documentation and all of that stuff.
We put this stuff up, they should be able to fund it faster.
You know, I was, I, I would, I guess I was just wondering, are they getting the whole packet when, um, you know, all the, all the agreements that they have to sign to?
I don't know, I know a lot of it is, you know, a last-minute phone call to Jeff, he sends them what he sends them, that's why I'm hoping, if we get everything up, we can just say, go here and click there.
Yeah.
You know, and everything, here's the instructions, here's the packet, here's the application.
Okay.
If you want, you can call.
Yeah.
Talk to Jeff, see how the last one went. Uh, okay, uh, did we, did we pass that?
No, we didn't.
Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll keep going, we'll get back to us at the end. Authorized the mayor's signed letter to the New York City DEP regarding the water supply agreement, this has been going on for how many years?
Seven plus.
Seven plus years, um, and this is integral part of us doing any work on the dams, is to connect to the aqueduct system in New York City. Um, I think they just keep, uh, moving the goalposts on us and, uh, or just ignoring us or whatever, just, uh, Greg can give you a better description of it, this is my snapshot.
All of the above.
Since I've had with them, um, so it hasn't gone smoothly, so this is another, another, uh, letter, um, in response to their previous meeting or their letters, so, of what they're requiring.
Good letter.
Requiring more stuff that's just we can't do. So, uh, anyway, like to, uh.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to the New York City DEP regarding the water supply agreement.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Do you wanna add anything tonight, Greg?
Just as a follow-up to see how they come back with it, we've gotta try to get some political clout and get up the ladder with people who might actually be able to stir them, because.
Right.
They don't seem to be worried about us.
So what, should you, we should be able to fight them?
I know, yeah. Just the idea of the whole water district thing, what they wanted to split things up and do would be millions of dollars for us to comply with what they want, millions, not just the little stuff, more than, probably as much as the dam work, to split it up, to meter it the way that they want. That only adds more levels of bureaucracy to three small.
Right.
Governments.
And it makes no sense.
When they're calling for consolidation of everything else, they're looking for us to split it up.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, approval of bills?
Okay, I move to approve, uh, batch number forty-seven eighty-three for a total of sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, let's see, approval of minutes, eight twenty-eight eighteen, village, uh, board of trustees, make, uh, well, someone else should make a motion to play with me down here, so.
I will make a motion to approve, uh, minutes for workshop meeting, August twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
You want to hear one?
What's that? Any discussion?
Lynn wasn't in attendance, so she can't second that.
Oh, you're right.
So I second it, Fran.
Okay.
Everything good?
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, and we, Lynn was abstaining, we were not present for that meeting. Um, and then approve the, uh, the minutes for nine four eighteen. I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, I have a question, and I, I brought it up to Jeff, but I wasn't, uh, I just wanted to bring it up here, is there a specific way that the vote should show on this?
Since typically X, Y, Z. X, Y, Z.
No, yes?
I think it's yes.
Yes.
No, and abstained?
And absent.
That's usually what I've seen.
It's yes, no, abstained.
Yes, no, abstained.
And absent?
No, it's only three, three, it's X, Y, and Z.
Okay, because on this, on the, uh, workshop for September fourth, we have a vote on the first page of five to nothing, which is fine, um, and that was approved, and we have a vote on the second page, which was denied, um, near the bottom, it's four one, but it was a denial, so we shouldn't have been one-four?
No, oh, yes, yes, she's correct on that one.
Just above the part that says requests for photo shoots, Michael.
Oh, I'm trying to find, we're in the nine-four?
We're in the nine-four, second page, write a, uh, the vote on the, um, Green Mountain Energy, the last line of that section, the vote you wrote, uh, four one, the board declined.
Should be one-four.
It should be one-four, I believe, right?
Yeah. Good catch, Fran.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept. I'll make a motion to accept with that one change.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can hop back to report from the board. We've got a few things, somebody else could go, Lynn, do you have?
I, you know, other than working with Fran and getting the senior picnic, and I really hope that our employees and volunteers.
It's not, it's not.
I know, it's not the senior picnic. It's the senior volunteer employee.
Volunteers and employees.
Appreciation.
Stravaganza.
I hope you all have. It works.
Yeah, make it, Greg. I'm on the fence, supposed to be out of town, but we're here, we'll be there. I'll make sure your favorite beer's there.
I have just a pass on from Jeff for basically Greg and Larry. Time sheets are due end of day Friday this week and probably from here until Michelle gets back because he tries to get payroll done in the weekend. So if you bring him time sheets on Monday, it's too late. So that was, and I have a few other things, but I can wait there.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, other than that, I have put in a request for chips reimbursement for the Market Street paving and for some other paving that Bugsy did, so that request has gone in. And we put in a request for Community Foundations of Hudson Valley for two thousand dollars in tech money for a project that's been going on in the office updating the systems. And other than that, just working on the picnic. So that's my.
I'll just go through, there's some, like, a calendar of things going on, so I thought I would read those off. One is the Lions Club Pig and Roast and Chicken Roast at Glenwood, that's this Saturday, I believe. It's three o'clock at Glenwood Farm, it costs us sixty dollars a person, benefits Frank Milkovich Scholarship Fund, Phillips Town Food Pantry, and Phillips Town Little League. All the money that the Lions Club makes, I think they zero out at the end of the year and give everything back to the community, Phillips Town itself. So it's well worth if you'd like to donate, or if you don't want to go, you can still donate to them. Good organization. Volunteers and Senior Picnic, as we just stated, is this Saturday, one to five, in Mayor's Park. Flu shots are being given at the Garrison Fire Department between two and six thirty on October tenth, costs is twenty-five dollars, or if you're sixty-five or older, free with Medicare card. Tomorrow, there will be a full volume siren test for Indian Point at six o'clock. So get ready to type out on Facebook what is going on. Then Knights of Columbus Oktoberfest is September twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Let's see, Phillips Town's Bike Day is Sunday, the thirtieth also, nine to twelve. Starting point, it is at Haline, and I believe it's in the upper parking lot behind the new school annex. Primary voting is this Thursday, should be interesting. And Coast Spring Chamber of Commerce Mixer is this Thursday also at five thirty at Magazino Italian Art. It's a fifteen dollar advance members ticket and twenty dollar non-members. And that's what I have.
Dave, when is the Bike Day?
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth, and that's nine to, nine to, what was that?
Just one other, one other point, on Saturday also, Church Street will be closed for a block party. There'll be no parking on Church Street, my guys will put signs out probably on the midnight Friday night, so Church Street will be closed and no parking on Church Street from two o'clock until nine.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can we put a blast out on, what page on Facebook and?
Is that also the date for Ms. Connie's memorial at the Tatlet? I thought I said something about that.
Mary, I'm sure, what time are you closing the street?
There'll be no parking in the streets, we close from two P M. until nine P M. Saturday on Church Street.
Are you going to close it off that night though, the night before?
No, we're going to put the signs up, basically don't park on the street the next day, we're going to try to avoid having, you know, trying to move cars, people trying to have their block party with cars there. So we just appreciate it if the residents can help out and not park fair the night before, that would help.
The memorial is on Sunday.
It's on Sunday, thank you.
What time is that, Greg?
It is eleven A M. at Todd's Park.
Thank you. Well, we have one, one other thing. The Knights of Columbus have, have put up, I don't know, I, I just seem not to coordinate well with, with myself or with Jeff or the village. Banners go up without our approval. The whole field is quadrant off now with tape, not with our approval. And actually, John, you came in and talked to Jeff, and he said we would discuss that tonight. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure really what to say, it just seems like you feel like whatever you want to do, you can do, and that's, that's just not going to work. I want, I want that, I don't know how Bruce is supposed to cut the lawns, or how long you're supposed to have that there, or if you're going to decide when we're cutting lawns now or what, but I want that out of there, I want those things out of there, I want the banner down. If you had come to us, I would, I would run it by the board, all of this, and we could have discussed it, but I just feel like we get absolutely no respect, really do.
Okay.
Like I said, if you come to us and talk to us about stuff, that's fine, but I mean, you just kind of do put stuff all over, I don't think you know exactly what's going on down that field, because I don't think I know all the time. Someone could come in and we could, you know, and move something ahead quickly to have someone have a party or whatever that might want to use the ball field, or maybe we want to use the ball field this weekend, I don't know, but now it's all taped off, so I'd like to have all of that removed.
Bruce is planning on mowing the lawn, mowing the park, his plan, his schedule, mowing for that area is Friday.
Okay.
You know, the tent is going up on Thursday, and I told him that, the tent is going up on Thursday.
Right, so his plan, mowing the ballpark and the pavilion is Friday, so just to let you know that.
So if we could have that stuff removed by then, that would be appreciated. Anything else from the public?
I guess I would ask, John Shear, I would ask, when could I put that, that tape back up in place, because it looks like it is a deterrent. The animals didn't work, we saw the geese standing along with the, we saw the geese standing alongside the dogs out there, so those weren't working. So that's why I'm taking it down, tape, I would like to put it back up, so if I can get permission for when I can go back out there and put the tape up, because it has stopped the geese from defecating on the field. We're planning on having people bring blankets and sit around, and last year we picked up about a hundred pounds of goose droppings, spent five hours with five guys. The village has no other means in which to get rid of the goose droppings, and since it's been up on Saturday, there are no geese on that field anymore. So that people, so that people.
They're on Morris Avenue now.
Pardon me?
You can come watch them on Morris Avenue now. They've migrated.
Well, at least the field will be clean.
I'm joking, John, they, they didn't move.
And people can actually use the field. And it's the idea of taking back.
Because the school uses that, and yes.
Does Pop Cora use it also?
They haven't been using it because of the situation down there. They went down to Garrison supposedly and used the fields down there.
There's no geese down in Garrison?
Supposedly not. So I guess then I need to ask when I can put the tape back up.
I can go get the calendar.
So that we don't have to go out there and pick up all the goose droppings. Rows of tape can be removed, and Bruce could row, mow in between, and I can coordinate it with him.
I'm not going to have them mow between, between stakes or ribbons. I mean, it comes out, it comes out. I mean, if you want to put it up, I mean, we could talk to Bruce and it would be the week before, because if not, then he's going to probably need to cut next week, and, and so you'd have to take them down again. If you want to be taking them up and down and working with whatever schedule comes along, that's, that's one thing. Looking at this, it looks like the last week, we'd have to just talk to Bruce on when he's going to cut, I'm sure you'd want the grass cut, you know, we are getting a Thatcher that might help clean up everything, I don't know when that's going to be delivered. I thought that they had it in stock, we approved it, so I don't know if that's going to help or not. Bruce, no, it wasn't the collector, it was like a Thatcher, which, you know, well, yeah, it kind of collects the, collects the, the grass cuttings, but it might also take up some of that, or that's what Bruce feels.
And Haline doesn't use it for practice.
What's that?
Haline doesn't use it for practice.
I have no idea how they're using it or.
Joe Moranti is going to be coordinating with Haline, so I guess we need to wait until he talks to them, too.
You know, I need to talk to some of the other sports organizations to see if they're going to be down there. It is stopping the geese from down there, they're raining, it's actually getting rid of some of that geese dropping that are on the field now. We just didn't really want to spend four or five hours trying to remove all the geese droppings. We have a lot of games, we have kids, we have a fun zone coming there.
Yeah, but I, I mean, you're bringing all this up, and I understand all that, but we don't have the manpower, and we don't have the people to do that either.
I understand.
This is a, this is a moneymaker for you, a big moneymaker.
No, no, wait, it's, no, wait, wait, no, no, it's not, no, wait, no, no.
No, I am mayor right here, and I am the one that's running the meeting.
It's not a fundraiser for us, first off.
First of all, I'm talking, so please, a little respect, which I just brought up that you don't have for me. First of all, you're there with your organization, making money, and that's great, you have a great group of guys, and you're doing a great job, that's fine, but that doesn't mean that we have, that we are responsible for making your day happen. We don't have the manpower to go down there, the geese are a problem, we're not going down there for just you and this, and this one event, and that's it. We're not just doing that, and then anyone that comes here, we're going down there and doing that. Village people are paying their taxes to have stuff taken care of or whatever. You're, you're from our all around, you're for us, for a group, a charitable organization that you're working for, and that's all understood, but we don't have the manpower to do that. And so when you're bringing up all this stuff, like, we should be the people that are doing this, I think that you have, you're making so much money, do you rent tents, do you, do you hire bands? You're, you're spending a lot of money invested in this, but you're not willing to spend a little bit more money to have someone clean up, clean up that area. That's our responsibility. When we give it to you for free, we don't charge anyone, anything more than fifty or a hundred dollars to use the whole, the field, but we're supposed to be responsible. That's, that's my take on it.
Okay, can I respond? Can I respond?
If you'd like to respond, sure.
Okay, first off, Knights of Columbus, it's a not-for-profit organization, most of the money that we raise from this event goes to Our Lady of Loretta Parish, okay? The largest church in town with like over nine hundred families that are part of that Catholic church. Most of the money goes to that. The other rest of the money goes to Special Olympics out of Wappingers, and some of the money is going to the Putnam Humane Society. We keep several thousand dollars in order to pay for the thirty-five thousand dollars worth of expenses we have. That event that takes place, there's roughly around seventy to eighty volunteers, no outside vendors come from anywhere to do anything there, that's all organized, cooked, served by all volunteers from Our Lady of Loretta Parish and also the Knights of Columbus, okay? So it's been going on for four years, and we do it all ourselves, okay? There's no profit made by our organization, because we take that money and we put it on for next year. So we're trying to bring in people into the town for that, to raise money for different organizations, and also to bring people into the town, because no other events take place in this town. And we're, I try to continue that tradition here in town, okay? That's one thing. The other thing is if I need to take the tape down, I guess I'm asking you now, when can I put the tape back up, if possible, so I can deter the geese from defecating on the field, so that it's a clean zones when people are sitting, where we set up five hundred chairs underneath the tent, we would like to have that as a clean zone, the field. I'm not asking you to do anything. That's why the tape was put up there, to get rid of the geese, because no other solutions have been provided by the village. The field isn't used by anybody, you can look at the baseball field, and if you all go out there and walk on the field, you can see why children wouldn't be playing on that field, because it's an embarrassment that we have such a beautiful facility and we can't use it because we haven't really taken the right corrective actions. I think I did. I'm sorry that the geese are in another location, but you've got to, but you've got to take back the field. So I'm, I'm willing to take that and go down there, I spent three hours Saturday morning putting it up, it cost me eighty dollars, that's out of my pocket, Dave, that I put all that tape and bought the tape and put everything up, and I do that as a volunteer, I volunteer to do this.
But nobody gave you permission to do that.
I understand, and I.
So don't, you know, you're crying on the wrong shoulder here.
That's fine, and I apologize for taking that action, doing it too quick, and I should have checked with you guys, and I didn't know you had a meeting tonight.
Jeff told you you had a meeting.
You had a meeting tonight, and that tonight you should come and ask us, that's what he said, you know, so, so the difference between what he said and, you know, unfortunately, you don't hope, and he did it, and then, you know, it backfired, because.
Okay, so I guess.
And I don't think the solution, I mean, I thank you for giving us so much credit, and it's solving a problem that no one can solve anywhere in the country from what I can see, but putting tape all over field so no one can use it is not a solution to keep the geese out. It might be a solution for your organization, for what you're doing three weeks from now, but it's not helping anybody to go down there and use it this week if they wanted to, or next week, because it's all quadrant off with tape, so how does that work?
Well, that quadrant design and stuff can be reduced down and stuff, with a little bit different.
Oh, so we're going to play inside little quadrants, or if people want to go down there? I'm just saying, it's not, you're making it like we didn't take the correct action, you tell me what the correct action is, what are we going to spend a lot of money on labor to do that, which we don't have, and we can barely get a lot of stuff done, like cutting trees down in the village? Or should we invest in machinery that we also don't have the money for, and then who's going to, you know, who's going to provide the labor for that? Or, so what are, what are we supposed to do? I mean, you know, I know we're incompetent here, and you've made that clear, so maybe give us a suggestion that we could do, that's not going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money and that we actually could actually do, because I'm, I'm all ears. I talked to you, you had mentioned dogs, I talked to you about that, and I, I got a limp response, basically, that we were still, you know, we should be cleaning up that area, and basically telling me we should clean up that area. And I didn't misinterpret that, the email that you sent me.
Well, a dog solution, a dog park is a good solution, but nothing was taken, no action was taken here in.
No action was taken, because we can only do so much, and this was like a month ago that we started on this course.
Well, you know, we, we put in this notice, we've known the geese situation, the problem there and stuff, I put the application in six or seven months ago and stuff, and we, we know it's a problem down there, don't we? We're just sort of putting our heads in the soil and stuff, if, if you don't think it is, nobody uses the field.
I think we all agree that there's a problem, I think we can agree on a solution.
Well, right now, this is a solution I'm having for a very expensive, very large festival that I'm putting on, this is not, this is.
That's yours.
For, it's for the community, too, Dave.
Is it?
Yeah, you wanted me to give you a list of all the people that attend and have a great time?
That's, that's good, I'm glad.
Did you come last year?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so it's a.
And I complimented you when you're people that are working down there, but that doesn't, doesn't mean that we have to, that everything should be geared towards you and everybody should stop everything we're doing, because you're having a festival down there that you think everyone is enjoying, and maybe they are.
I think what John is, if I may, John is asking the village, what, what is the date by which he could reinstall the yellow tape prior to the event, which is, I think, September twenty ninth and thirtieth? So.
And I would like to say that I'm not ready to make that decision until we know exactly what's going on within the next few weeks.
Well, that's just it, to give him an answer to that, we would have to determine what, what events, what use is going to occur on the field between now and September twenty ninth, and then we can give him an answer.
And when there's cutting going.
Yes, so this cutting is, whether or not Haline's going to be using it, whether or not anyone else is going to be using it, so there are at least three elements, events that would factor into.
If there's not, if there's no parties planned, Joe Moranti's going to be talking to Haline, so we don't know what the result of that is going to be.
I guess a couple of things, one is the maintenance of the field.
Can we take it offline?
Yep.
And we'll come back to you with a response, John?
When?
Ruth Ann, I'll, I'll give you a call, and we'll, we'll sort it through.
And I'll check with Haline.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess, well, public comments, I'll, I'll make one, uh, two other comments. Um, one is on Kemble Avenue. Um, somebody, um, filled in around the pole on Kemble Avenue with the sidewalk, uh, was broken. Uh, it was, well, they'd set a new pole well back, and you had somebody come in, the contractor, to fill in the, uh, sidewalk on the west side of the street.
Yes.
And that has, um, probably fifty different words on it, um, where somebody engraved into the sidewalk. I don't know if you all looked at it or saw it, but that looks like a vandalism to me, and, um, I'd make, uh, a note that somebody probably should take a look at it.
The, um, the holes that you're referring to, what was on Kemble Avenue, one was on Furnace Street. Uh, the holes were created when Central Hudson removed the, the dead wood.
Sure, sure.
Uh, not Central Hudson, when Verizon removed the dead wood, and part of the, uh, part of the agreement was that Verizon had to have a, a firm come in and, and, uh, put new, uh, concrete there. Uh, they did that today for, uh, Furnace Street. I don't remember when they did it for Kemble Avenue.
They did it on, uh, probably on, uh, Friday of last week.
Okay.
But somebody decided to take, uh, a stick and write all types of, um, words and pizza and initials, and, um, I think, uh, it should be investigated and, and maybe somebody find out who did it, because it's, and the sidewalk is, uh, not the way it should be. So as of this time, um, with regards to the tape down there, uh, can it remain until you, uh, get back to me? Yeah, remind us, so I can...
Whatever, the tape has to come down.
Yeah, Bruce is planning on mowing the field and the mayor's apartment, the pavilion and the field on Friday. That's his schedule. And I know he's also having somebody else come in to do the weed whacking, if it hasn't been done already, around the fences, so...
This coming Friday?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because the senior picnic, the, excuse me, the picnic is on Saturday, so, yeah.
They have a tent coming in with chairs and tables on Thursday.
But, but that, that's not in the...
That's in the Willow area. I didn't touch the Willow, the Willow area hasn't been impacted by the tape.
It's in the field area, so it has to come down.
As of what time, when, tomorrow?
Uh...
Or by Friday? Can we keep it up so we can keep down the amount of geese droppings on the field? And I apologize for putting it up beforehand. Um, I was a little excited about the system.
If you can remove it by Thursday, John, so that it would be unimpeded, uh, grass cutting on Friday, thank you.
But when would we, uh, find out, um, when we could put it back in?
I'll, I'll be...
I have to contact Halley to make sure what, if, how they're using the field. I'll talk to Joe Moranti, and talk to Halley.
Okay.
Anything else from the public?
Yes.
What are the hours for the picnic? Pick plant?
One to five.
Hour eleven.
Anything else? Make a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
What's that? What do we got? Oh, executive session, I'm sorry, what did I say?